Uh, this is a meeting of the, a regular meeting of the State and City Council. It is the nineteenth of January in the year 2021. And we are all here that need to be. Uh, Alyssa, the staff, staff's all here?
Yes.
Counsel is here. I see everyone. I haven't seen Jordan yet, but she's here apparently.
Here.
That's fine. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We've got some public comment tonight. And so Alyssa, would you take care of that? Uh, get that started for us? And then we'll go on with our meeting. Go ahead.
So we'll have Grayden is here and he will be first up. Um, and he should be popping onto our screen any minute. There he is. All right, um, Grayden, you can go ahead. I'll start the timer after you introduce yourself.
Okay. Hi, uh, I'm Grayden Justice. Uh, my address is five thirteen Northwest Herald, uh, Sublimity, Oregon. Um, I'm coming to you guys, uh, with the hope that you will consider to, uh, reconfigure or make a one-time exception to the boundary lines for, from one marijuana dispensary to the other. Um, right now, the policies put in place requires that be a thousand feet from a school and a thousand feet from another dispensary. While keeping these numbers in mind, I currently have a location locked up with the owner of, uh, four ten North First Avenue, Staton. This location meets the requirements of being a thousand feet from, uh, school, but is seven hundred and fifty feet, um, away from the nearest established dispensary, which is a difference of two hundred and fifty feet. Um, this thousand feet requirement from one dispensary to the next is set by, by the city of Staton. I'm asking you guys to please reconsider or make a one-time exception by allowing me to make, to move forward with this business opportunity. You would be helping to create more jobs in the state and community, especially during these hard times, being that the marijuana dispensary is considered an essential business and would allow the citizens of Staton to continue working. I have grown up volunteering time in this community since I was eight years old. I helped my parents put on the San Diego Canyon Stampede rodeo. While doing this, I have grown to love the community around me. I would love to help Staton by opening a vacant business building and know that I will be assisting in, in the community with the tax revenue created by my business, which will add to the community's prosperity. Now that the state of Oregon has paid back the loan of thirteen million dollars to legalize marijuana, the tax money is being dispersed into our communities to help schools, mental health, Oregon cities, counties, uh, Oregon State Police, and also the Health, Oregon Health Authority. This tax revenue is expected to rise from eighty-five million to two point three billion in twenty twenty. If you could grant this one-time exception to allow me, to allow my dispensary to open at this location, this could increase the tax revenue for Staton and provide jobs to the community. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, Alyssa, uh, who's next?
Hold on here, Mayor. Somehow I hid myself. Oh, there I am. Um, next is Julie Boxler. Unfortunately, I got a text while Grayden was talking that she is stuck in another meeting and is unable to get on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I, I apologize to the council to break protocol, but I just wanted to say to Grayden, thank you. You're the first public testimony that's been on here in a really long time. And I'm so happy to have somebody on here, uh, other than the, the usual faces. So, um, thank you for taking time to come out and talk to us and.
Thank you for, for, thank you for allowing me to. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Grayden.
Mr. Mayor?
We'll be talking about it, yeah.
Um, can I, can I ask, can I ask a question?
I guess.
Um, Grayden, how, how many, um, in your business plan, how many, um, employees do you plan on staffing at your, um, business?
Well, um, during startup, it would probably be anywhere from three to four people, including myself.
Okay. And a, a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
And the, you said that you have already talked to the, um, the landlord of the, the building and whatnot and have that potentially hashed out? Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, another question. Go ahead.
Uh, this is Counselor Hook. Um, I am curious about what the next steps would be for someone bringing this forward to the council. Um, just kind of what the, the process is so that we're not just hearing a public comment and then not clear on, on what we need to do as counselors or what, uh, Mr. Justice may need to do, um, as a follow-up.
The, the council would need to, um, do a vote, um, to direct staff to look into the issue and bring it back before the council. Hopefully that answers your question, Counselor Hook.
Okay.
And can we make that motion at any time or do we need to wait at the point of the meeting?
I'm waiting to get. Typically, we would do it at the end under the, um, business from the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Let's do that. Yeah. But we can do something tonight. Exactly. That's what, that's kind of what you're asking. Yeah. Okay. Uh, anything else? And we don't have Ms. Boxler here tonight or yet, or is she on her way or what? Alyssa, what, uh, what's this, what's the, uh, what's your feeling on this? That she probably is not gonna be here?
It, it looks like Dan might have a comment.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Mayor, I, I was the one that received the text from Julie and then I texted Alyssa to let her know. Uh, her comment was that she is stuck in another meeting and can't get out. I asked her if she will join late and I have not gotten a reply.
Well, let's just go on with the meeting.
And if she shows up and you choose to let her speak later in the meeting, then that could be the opportunity.
All right, good. Well, let's go on then. Uh, let's see, the consent agenda for January fourth, City Council minutes. Do we have some action on that, please? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
To approve. Okay, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, no discussion. So Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, most, motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you, folks. Um, under general business tonight, a temporary COVID nineteen public meeting procedures, uh, staff report. Okay, somebody, whoever?
You get me.
You get, well, that's fine.
Um, good evening again, Mayor and Council. So before you is the, are the temporary COVID nineteen temporary, um, public meeting procedures at your meeting in October. Um, you had directed staff to bring forward the temporary rules, um, again, at the second meeting in January. Um, so enclosed in the packet are, is a copy of the temporary COVID nineteen public meeting procedures. Marion County, as of right now, is remaining in the extreme risk category until at least January twenty-eighth. And, um, at this point, I will turn it over to the council. Staff at, doesn't have any recommendations on changes at this time, um, but we'll let you discuss.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, discussion on this, folks. What, uh, what do you see that needs to change, if anything? And if not, uh, let's approve these. Go ahead, somebody. And it is, it is disappointing that we are in this, what seems like a virtual lockdown, uh, into the end of this month and who knows when it, when it goes away. Anyway, my frustration shouldn't count in this. Go ahead, somebody. Anyone?
Mayor, this is, uh, Counselor Hook. Um, I think that it's extremely important that we, uh, get these in place so that people understand how they can interact with the council. Um, it's been a long time that we've been under these COVID restrictions. And so I'm just looking forward to having something, um, solid that we can all understand and, and communicate out to people on how they can participate.
Okay. What do you see that needs to be changed, if anything, Counselor? Are these drafts, are they in accordance with where we want to be?
This is actually what has already been adopted in October. So what we have brought forward is just the adopted rules that we had put into place back in October.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I, I believe the intention that we had back in October was just to have an opportunity to, uh, revisit them if we felt like something wasn't working, um, just to have the opportunity to do that. And I don't necessarily have anything to change to them. Um, I was pleasantly surprised to see that we did have some public comments because my only thoughts, um, with this is that I, I feel like you would think that having, you know, the accessibility of being anywhere and being able to come on and comment would help bring some, um, community to the meetings. And it's, um, I don't necessarily think it's the platform, but the fact that we've had one person come and comment, um, for almost a year now is, uh, a little disheartening. So I don't necessarily have any suggestions for change. I just, and I just don't know if it's working per se, but that's my take on it.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Hook.
Um, yeah, this is Counselor Hook. I, I wanted to, thank you for clarifying that, Alyssa, that we were, and Jordan also, or Counselor Ort also, for, um, clarifying why we're bringing him back. I think that it's important to recognize that, you know, we are still in the extreme risk category. Um, so I think that bringing these, you know, back, maybe not the rules back in this way, but maybe re, uh, bringing it back up in a couple of months um, to see if we're still in the same type of category. Um, and if we should, uh, try to meet in person if we're in a reduced risk, uh, category at that point might be good. But, um, I agree with Counselor Ort that I feel like this, this has hindered people from, uh, participating in public comment. Um, but I think a lot of it has to do with, uh, the fact that, you know, many people aren't aware of, you know, how easy it is to participate in this way if they have the appropriate, um, access to do so. So, um, I don't see that we need to necessarily make any changes to the rules, um, but maybe just continue to revisit where we're at, um, health-wise with the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, and this is something that Counselor Ort and Counselor Hook started making me think about. So this is not a question I've shared with staff ahead of time. So I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, Alyssa. Uh, what planning has already been done, um, as far as the degrees to risk categories that we would be in? Do, does staff sort of have a table of what we can do under certain risk categories? And then the next one, as we digress down to lower risk in this?
We've, we've been discussing it and, um, as the council knows, monitoring the situation. Um, and we, we have discussed how we could do it and do it successfully. The, the difficulty really falls to, um, the hybrid and technology um, of having some staff members, um, or members of the council potentially who, um, would be unable, um, due to health reasons, possibly come in person. So there's definitely been discussions. We have a diagram. I think I've talked about it before of like how we could set the meeting up to be able to properly socially distance and, um, still looking at live streaming and doing all of those things. It's, it's definitely something that's on our radar and we're always watching.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Alyssa. I just think it's really important that we highlight that staff does have a plan to the public and that it's our intention to go in person when we can and, and get out from some of the regulations from the state.
Just a personal point of curiosity here. Uh, how many of you folks get comments from, uh, let's say the, the public that they've watched these meetings and are fascinated, um, impressed, disgusted, whatever, with, uh, this format, uh, over the past nine months? How much public feedback are we getting? Does anyone call and say, I like that what I saw last night? Or somebody, you know, whatever?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Patty, I'll answer that question for myself. I have spoken to, I spoke to a lot more folks, uh, initially with frustrations about the council meeting format currently. And then since then, I have heard some, um, just sporadic comments about what meeting, uh, they have watched and what their thoughts were on it. But for the most part, I would say that's decreased. Uh, public engagement has lacked. And that's a real concern of mine as an individual counselor. And I really want to see us go out from under this and move on to where we can engage with the public again.
Hey, thank you. Good. Anyone else? Okay, well, one response. That's good. Shall we go on to business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I, this is Counselor Hook. Um, I have only gotten, uh, a few comments from the public, uh, recently. A lot of it had to do with, uh, the pool, um, the pool issue that, that we, that you guys had a work session on that I wasn't able to attend. Um, and then, uh, just like general questions of like, how do I bring something up to the council? Which then I refer them to, um, the temporary rules that we do have, um, on the website. So it hasn't been a lot, but it does concern me that, uh, maybe people are, uh, not engaging just because they don't know how and it doesn't feel accessible.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. So, uh, do we need to make a decision on this? Alyssa, you suggested in a comment that we really didn't if we were okay with the way things stand.
Correct.
Not happy, but okay.
Right, yeah. If, if there's not gonna be any changes made, the staff can continue to monitor the situation. And if something comes up where we see that we need to make changes to the rules, we can definitely bring it back to council.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, do you folks okay with that? Can we go on to the next item? Okay, all right, here we go. Resolution authorizing submission of a CDBG emergency rental assistance grant. And Mr. Fleishman, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the issue before you this evening is, uh, the adoption of a resolution to authorize staff to submit an application to the state of Oregon for a twenty twenty emerged COVID emergency rental assistance grant. Uh, these are grants that were announced by Business Oregon, uh, about a month ago. Uh, the, uh, the distribution rules allocate about two point two million dollars for the grants statewide with a maximum grant of five hundred thousand uh, per grant, which is the amount that we intend to apply for. Uh, in order, uh, in order to be eligible to apply, a city needs to partner with another jurisdiction, very similar to our existing housing rehabilitation CDBG grant. Uh, if it's just two communities applying, the maximum grant is four hundred thousand. And as additional communities are brought in, the maximum amount that can be applied for increases up to five hundred thousand. Uh, we have, uh, reached out to, uh, the nearby cities of Turner, Almsville, and Sublimity, all of whom have expressed interest. Uh, as of, uh, this evening, I have received a participation agreement back from Sublimity. Um, I was in touch, uh, this afternoon with the city administrator in Turner and it will be going before the Turner Council on Thursday night. Uh, and expect that they will return their participation agreement, uh, the end of the week. Uh, we are, um, staff has reached out to the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, uh, who has been administering other COVID-related rental assistance programs regarding program and administration. Again, similar to the, um, housing rehabilitation grant, the state requires that the city contract with what they call a sub-grantee uh, to administer the program. Uh, the Community Action Agency has agreed to administer the program. We are working on a sub-grantee agreement, uh, with them. Um, let's see what else. Uh, we are required to hold a public hearing prior to submitting the application. That hearing was held last Wednesday, uh, by Zoom. I was at the community center. Uh, no one, uh, came in person or attended the Zoom meeting. But prior to that, I did receive, uh, an email from one individual supportive of submitting the application. Um, with that, should the council choose to, resolution ten fifteen, uh, would authorize us to submit the grant, accept the grant, enter into the contract with the state, et cetera. And I expect that, uh, once I get the, we should be ready to file that application as soon as I get the participation agreements, uh, from the, uh, other two cities. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. Um, and otherwise, uh, put before you, resolution ten fifteen.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Uh, discussion, folks. Go ahead, somebody.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Go ahead.
Um, Dan, I asked you this over email and I'm not sure if you got to it. I apologize for giving you this question late. Um, on the January thirteenth hearing, how much public participation do we get from that?
We got one email in advance. No one came to the hearing and no one, um, came to the, no, no one attended the Zoom session either.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Ort.
Dan, have we previously, do we, do we know? I mean, I would, I guess I would assume that there's probably more than one person in the community that could use this grant. Has, have we had anyone reach out to the city prior to this or to the other cities to, to ask for any assistance in any way?
Uh, in the past two weeks, I, I, I would make up since, uh, some publicity about this grant application has gone out. I have received several emails from individuals, uh, looking for assistance. My reply has been, well, we're just getting around to submitting the grant. We'll see if we get it. It will be, uh, my experience with our housing rehabilitation grant. By the time we get the contract, do all of the necessary environmental review and other paperwork, um, and then get a authorization to expend funds, it will likely, uh, be several months, uh, before we're in the position to actually accept applications. So I have explained that to everybody who has reached out to me. Uh, when the announcement, uh, came out in, um, in December, I reached out to a couple of landlords just to sort of feel them out about the level of, um, potential demand, shall we say? Um, both of them, uh, indicated that about twenty percent of their tenants are behind in rent. Uh, and when I mentioned that to, uh, Jimmy Jones, who's the director of the Community Action Agency, he said that was right in line with what they're hearing pretty much countywide or region-wide.
Oh, yeah.
There are, um, about thirteen hundred renter households in the city of Staton, according to, uh, Census.
Correct.
Uh, estimates. So if, uh, twenty percent of them are behind in rent, uh, that would be about, uh, two hundred and fifty, uh, or more households or more. I estimate if we are successful in getting five hundred thousand dollars, we, uh, we'll be able to assist between sixty-five and eighty households in the four cities.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have two more questions. So, um, Dan, is the whole grant amount, the two point two million?
Two point two million is what the state is a making, is making available statewide.
Okay, so if we're asking for five hundred thousand, that potentially will only help like four, i- if every, if every grant that is, grant proposal that is put in is for five hundred thousand, let's say, then they're only gonna be able to pick four of them?
Correct. Well, it would be.
A little over.
Probably be five.
Okay.
Probably no more than five.
And is this program for like smaller communities? Or it's for any, any community, obviously with the stipulations, but any community that applies for it?
It is for what the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program calls non-entitlement communities. The bigger cities in the state, Portland, Corvallis, Salem, Eugene, Medford. I think it's any city with a population of over fifty thousand is an entitlement community and gets their CDBG money directly from Washington. For the smaller communities.
You gotta work for it.
That are under fifty thousand, the money goes to the states that then decide how to distribute it and we need to apply.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm, uh, Counselor, guys, I have one more question. Um, and I asked you this in an email, Dan, so it'll be easy one. Um, so how do we, how are we making sure that, um, anyone who applies for this grant, the money is actually gonna go towards their beds?
The, the program rules state that the, that the money is actually dispersed to the landlord, not to the tenant.
Thank you. That's all I got.
In exchange for that, the landlord needs to certify that the tenant will not be evicted for back rent. So, so the application needs to include a statement from the landlord that they are actually behind in rent and how much. The application needs to include some type of documentation that the, that the applicant's, um, income has been impacted by COVID, that they've been laid off or furloughed or reduced hours or whatever. Um, and, um, and like I said, uh, uh, it's also, there's income limits. They have to qualify as lower moderate income household, which means their household income is no more than eighty percent of the area median income. And that's adjusted by household size. And, um, and like I said, then once they're approved, the check will be made out to the landlord.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Hook, um, thank you, Dan, for actually giving a little bit more information because that was gonna be sort of my next, uh, question was kind of what does the process look like for someone that is applying for the grant? Um, but I still do have a question. It looks like, so they have to get a statement from the landlord and then have some type of COVID impact and then also qualify financially, um, with their income. But the COVID impact, um, is it just job loss or reduced hours? Or is it also increased costs due to COVID? For example, um, they had to increase their childcare or find a more expensive childcare, um, place? Or if there's, uh, court fees associated with families where they're having. Or if there's court fees associated with families where they're having to negotiate, like things like that due to COVID? Is that also included, or is it just loss of income?
I don't know the answer to that, Counselor Hook. I would need to look into the program documentation a little deeper and may need to even ask Business Oregon that, that question.
Great. The new director's great at Business Oregon.
Good question. Okay. All right. What else, folks? What do you want to do with this, this resolution? Somebody like to move in that direction, or are there more questions, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess if nobody else has any more questions, I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution 1015.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there a second somewhere?
Seconded is Counselor Patty.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1015 authorizing the submission of a grant application, acceptance of the grant, and forwarded to the city entering the intergovernmental agreement with cities of Turner, Almsville, Sublimity, and authorizes city manager to execute the necessary sub-grantee agreements with the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. Okay, so an approval. Is there any, anything else? If not, Alyssa, would you go ahead and poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have another question.
After Alyssa to poll the council.
Well, okay. Again, with this format, we have to unmute. Again, with this format, we have to unmute ourselves. I have to ask you, and it's hard when you're going back and forth. So a little bit of grace and a little bit of leeway would be much appreciated.
Somebody needs to jump in a little quicker on these things. But go ahead with your question, please.
No, Mr. Mayor, I asked you for a little bit of grace and a little bit of patience while we unmute ourselves and move forward.
Move forward. Let's go.
Again, this format is not the easiest to do.
Ask your question, please, Counselor.
Yes, I will. Dan, is it a requirement of the grant itself? Or is this something that we are putting in the grant that the applicant has to be within 80% of the median? Basically, they have to be low income in order to access this grant? Is that, is that what the state is saying? Or is that something that we're putting in there?
That is what the United States Congress said when they passed the Community Development Block Grant Act back in 1974.
Okay. Gotcha. I guess I would say my only comment to that would just be, I just feel for anyone who is in the position to need rent assistance, regardless of their income because, or their stated income, because that means that, you know, they also need help as well. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you for allowing me to answer my question.
You're welcome, dear. Let's wait a few minutes now for any more questions, so we don't seem to be arbitrary and unkind. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
I was in twelfth floor.
Alyssa? Go ahead.
Counselor Hook? Yes.
Counselor Or? Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item is nineteen and twenty fiscal year audit. Susanna?
Yeah.
Brian Street?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
There she is. Go ahead, please.
I'm here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We also have Brad with our auditors when he has his camera come on. So like I, when I presented last year and walked you through the pieces of the audit, this year I said that I was going to have our auditors personally come and speak and give you the update for you to ask him questions directly. So I would like to introduce Brad. He's worked with our city for four years now, I think. Correct, Brad?
Well, yeah, at least four years. It's been a long time off and on over the years.
Consistently the last four years straight. So he's got to watch a lot of progression go as we have, go up, as he's watched our, our financials. So I'm going to hand this over to Brad so he can give us the presentation and let you know how they audited and all the wonderful things. It's all yours, Brad.
Thank you. I'm going to try and share my screen with you so we can kind of walk through this together. So hopefully this works. I love technology, you know. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, well, Carl Allen Smith, Division of Senior Leawak, had the opportunity once again of serving as the auditors for the city of Staton for the year ended June 30, 2020. As connection with our audit, we have, of course, issued our audit opinion, which is our opinion on the financial statements, which in a nutshell says that these financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations of the city for the year ended June 30, 2020. So basically, we're saying, you know, you can rely upon these financial statements for decision-making purposes. Just to let you know, our audit is conducted under three separate sets of standards. We've had the generally accepted auditing standards that apply to all audits in the U.S. We have the requirements of government auditing standards that are issued by the U.S. government. And we have the requirements of Oregon minimum standards, which is, you know, those rules promulgated by the state legislature and implemented by the Oregon Secretary of State's office. And each of these sets of standards has its own report that's contained in the overall document that you have for the financial statements. So where did the city end up at the end of the year? So you, you have total assets and deferred outflows of $44.9 million. Governmental activities of that had 16.3, and the business-type activities had 28.6. And when we talk about this governmental activities and business-type activities, so governmental activities are those things that are like the general fund, the streets, public works, that type of thing. And then the business-type activities, that's your water and sewer systems. Those things are mainly funded through a user charge in an exchange transaction. So he buys water from you, they pay for the water. So those are the two types of things we're talking about, between governmental and business-type activities. So the total liabilities and deferred inflows for the city were $18.9 million. Governmental activities only had 3.1 of that. The vast majority of those are in the business-type activities. They had $15.8 million of those liabilities and deferred inflows. So it gives you a net position of $25.9 million. And you'll see that is almost evenly split between the governmental activities and your business-type activities. So that's kind of, you know, if you're looking at overall the financial position of the city, those are the overall numbers. And you had a change in that net position this last year of about $500,000. $200,000 in the governmental activities, $300,000 in the business-type activities. And that change for $500,000, that's on total revenues of $10.8 million. The governmental activities having 6.3 of that and business-type activities having 4.5 million of those overall revenues. So then, if you were, you know, paging through this document, the next thing you come to is talking about governmental funds. So here's a history from 16 to current of the governmental fund balances and what's happened there. We have seen that, you know, it's kind of done a, a bit of a curve here, increasing each year through 18, and then it decreased in 19, and it's about even on the last two years. So what that says is, you know, your governmental funds, you know, right now, in, at the end of 20, are just about where they were at the end of 16. So, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing, given the demands that are made on the governmental activities of the city. So you've been able, over the course of those five years, kind of held pretty steady on overall your governmental position. But you will see the blue part of this chart, that's your general fund, and it has been increasing each year a little bit. So the general fund, that main governmental fund, has overall been increasing in its overall financial health over the last five years. And the overall, you know, looking at the expenditures of the city, you'll see that your, your general government ones are always going to be kind of, you know, the middle of the road. Your most expensive area is public safety. That continues to increase in the cost to the city. And there's going to be a couple of reasons for that that we'll talk about here in just a moment. But yeah, those, those city, public safety costs are really, you know, what's, you know, going up over time. General governments has slight increases, of course, culture and recreation. And then your, your capital outlay and highways and streets, those kind of, you know, they, they don't fluctuate that much. It all depends on what's going on in any particular year for those items. So you're looking at now their proprietary funds, mainly the water, sewer, storm has a little bit of impact on this. You see that over time, your proprietary net, proprietary fund net positions, those have been increasing each year, which shows that, you know, you're, you're, you know, collecting sufficient funds to keep adding to the systems as there are more demands upon that system in terms of upkeep and improvements and that sort of thing. So those overall are, you know, showing positive trends over the last five years. This is why I want to talk about in terms of, you know, something that's driving that public safety cost. So your police are part of the, oops. I can't get on the right screen before I start pushing buttons. So your, overall, your, the police of the city belong to PERS. So they're covered by the Oregon PRS system. And you'll see here what's happened to the net pension liability of the cities related to PERS and then the city's plan. You'll see, you know, the PERS has been increasing every year. Well, the city's plan has actually been decreasing. Actually, at the end of 2020, is actually in an overfunded position, which means you basically have more assets than you do have projected liabilities under, for that. So that's in a good position. The city has limited ability to impact what's going on with PERS. But what this is telling you is your PERS rates have been increasing, and they're going to continue to increase, you know, as there is greater demand on the overall Oregon PRS system. So that's really what's driving a lot of that cost of that public safety. Okay. So, as I said, you know, we talked about those items. Another set of standards was the Oregon minimum standards. That report covers two areas. First, it talks about compliance with specific Oregon laws and regulations. We have a list of about eight areas that we're supposed to do specific tests on to see if you're complying with Oregon laws. The only area where we found any instance of non-compliance was in the area of local budget law, and it had to do with the preparation of the budget document itself. And a public, the notices that are publicized as part of the budget adoption process. So we did note a few errors on what was published. And then there was, you know, an error in how the appropriation resolution was drawn up. It included as part of the appropriations planned reserve amounts. You know, if you have a planned reserve, by definition, it's something you are not appropriating. You're setting that aside for future years. So those are, I consider those fairly minor errors in the budget preparation. Of course, and we do like to see that everybody comply with these rules, and they are very lengthy. I know Susanna is not afraid to call us with questions. But we did note those two errors. And then the other thing that this report talks about is internal controls. And as part of every audit, we consider an organization's internal controls. We do that as auditors to help us identify those areas of higher risk. But also it gives us the opportunity, if we see something that we need to bring forth to you, any weaknesses that are sufficient, that we think you need to at least be aware of them, we would do that. Now, I am happy to report we don't have any weaknesses in internal controls that we're bringing to your attention tonight. And for a city of your size, that's fairly unusual because you have a limited number of staff. But what it's telling us is you're able to use those limited staff resources and other individuals in, within the city to really develop, you know, adequate segregation of duties, which is where most small cities have struggled with. They'll have one person that's doing almost everything. So it's really a testament to, you know, the work that's been done by the city staff to kind of, you know, break up people's duties, make sure that no one person can do too much in a set of transactions so that you do have those good internal controls. And internal controls are things that, they protect the city. You know, sometimes I thought of, well, it, it's kind of a hassle to go through these steps. But overall, it really does protect the city at the end of the day. And then the other item is that we, where we have a report is under government auditing standards. Very similar type of things. It talks about control, compliance with laws and regulations. This just takes a little bit broader, looks as, is there anything else that could potentially have a significant impact on the city? And we didn't find any non-compliance. And then talks once again about internal controls in that report. So that's kind of, you know, as auditors, you know, our job is to opine upon the financial statements and give these other communications to you regarding compliance with laws, regulations, and internal controls. So I'd ask, are there any questions from anybody about our audit or the financial statements that I could answer tonight?
Go ahead. Anyone? Brad, do you have any suggestions on how do we deal with that, that increased PERS liability? Throw more money at it?
Well, you know, if I, if I had that answer, you know, I could probably make a lot of money telling people what the answer is. You know, the, at some point in time, the answer is going to be, more money is going to have to be put into the PERS system. You know, and what's really driving this in the PERS largely is those tier one and tier two retirees, which over the last, you know, five years have been retiring in droves. And these are the people who are getting, you know, very significant amounts of retirement. You know, and of course, you know, they, in their working career, they had an agreement with public employers that they would get these retirement benefits. So I don't fault them for it. But at some point in time, I think what's going to have to happen is the Oregon State Legislature is going to have to get real serious about this and say, you know, we probably, as a state, can no longer afford to maintain what's called defined benefit plans. That's what these are. These are defined benefit plans where your pension benefit is, is defined based upon, you know, how much you made during your career. What they probably are going to have to do is at some point in time, just have a cutoff and say, okay, anybody hired after this point in time, we are only going to we are only going to have what's called a defined contribution plan, which means, you know, what's typical like your 401K or similar type of retirement plans that businesses have, where people are only going to be eligible to receive the amount of money that they and their employer have set aside in account for them. You know, it defines, it's, the benefit is defined by how much money is put in over their working career. Long term, that's the solution. But that's going to take, you know, significant action by the state legislature. And there is lots of pressures on the state legislature to not do that type of an action because of the public employees throughout the state do have a swell, a significant amount of of voice in the political decision-making process. Now, I will tell you that, you know, this last year, the city did contribute an additional $250,000 to the PERS liability because PERS was offering kind of a one-time shot that if you made additional contribution, they would match it, which will help a little bit. But, you know, we have such a massive situation here. It's not just unique to Oregon. This is a situation that is across the US. And actually, Oregon is one of the states that's in better shape than, than most. You know, overall, Oregon is funded about 80%, which is a lot better than a lot of states. So we are not bad off as others. But if we look at this thing, and overall, I think you're just going to see pressure on local governments that this is, these additional contributions are going to have to make, or goes, create some situations where you're going to have to make some very difficult decisions about weighing off contributions to retirement plans versus services that the citizens want the city to be providing. So these are going to be some tough decisions, and these are going to come, you know, forth in the next decade. So.
Well, thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. Someone else? Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So we were foregoing filling one of the positions on our police force and setting that, to my understanding, we were setting that money aside to help pay for PERS. Is that going to help our situation moving forward?
Well, of course, it helps some, but there again, you know, so you're making, you know, you, you have this decision you have to make that, for instance, you're not going to have, you're going to have one less officer, you know, in, within the city that's going to be providing services to your citizens. So you have these very tough choices, like, you know, do we fund more PERS? Or do we maintain the same level of public safety services? You know, those are the tough decisions that I think are going to be coming down the road for most small cities in, in the state. So I think, you know, but you've, you know, your decision to, you know, basically have, you know, remove one officer, you know, if, if the city of Stateon has to have, remove one officer, if we had similar type of action, you know, how many officers would that take out of other cities? You know, regardless of how you feel about, you know, the whole defund the police question, you know, at some point in time, it, it's not going to affect just police. It's going to start affecting, you know, across the board in Oregon, all services that governments are going to be able to provide because they got to be funding these significant retirement plans.
Thank you.
Another person? Any question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Brad, there's also a kind of a, I guess, opposing viewpoint that I've heard before, and that is that as some of the tier one and tier two people no longer need to receive contributions, you know, the liability will actually go down to some degree.
Well, yes, and, and I agree with that. You'll, the thing is, when we look at the demographics, when, you know, most of these tier one, tier two people were working, their life expectancies were shorter at that point in time than they are today when they're actually retiring, I mean, in terms of, you know, their overall, you know, life expectancy. As people live longer, and these are defined benefit plans, you know, this, these payments go until they pass away. So as they live longer, it's putting a greater strain on the resources of these, of these systems. So the actuaries are, you know, going in this position of, you know, looking at, okay, well, you know, that's the job of actuaries, figure out, well, how long is generally everybody going to live? So they can begin to project out how much the future outflows are going to be. So yes, over time, that will happen. But you look at, you know, people who are today, you know, retiring at age 65, you know, their life expectancy could easily, you know, reach up to 90. Whereas maybe in their working career, 90 would have been very unusual. You know, probably would have been closer to 75 to 80. So, you know, that in and of itself is one of those things that's significantly impacting. This is just that the retirees are living longer.
Thank you, Brad. That's a really good explanation. I really appreciate that. So I also want to go ahead and say thank you to Susanna because I feel like your audit and how successful the city of Stateon is doing is a direct reflection of her and her work. And so I'm greatly appreciative to her, and thank you for conducting the audit, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I did want to say thank you to, express our thanks to the city staff. You know, of course, this year we had unique situations with the pandemic and, you know, limited availability to actually be onsite. But, you know, with city staff, they were ready for us for the audit. They were available, and they answered all our questions. You know, I'm sure Susanna can gets tired of all the questions we ask, you know. That's kind of the own auditor's job is to keep asking, well, why? So we, we asked lots and lots of questions. But I want to express our thanks to city staff for their help and cooperation throughout the audit process.
I, our philosophy, my philosophy and what I have helped my team to understand our mission statement from the finance team is the audit is a very valuable tool, and it really helps us to make sure that we're on track, that we're, we're protecting the public money and that we're spending it accordingly, and then all of things are in order. And the transition we've put through this year to come from the audit findings that we, I shared last year and from the prior years to none was a huge team effort to really change a lot of our procedures. And in the middle of that, go from a paper world to a paperless world and be really ready to hand Brad everything he needed and his team was, yeah, it was a big journey.
All right. Well, thank you again, Brad, and thank you, Susanna, and, and the finance team for good work. Good job. All right.
I appreciate your team, Brad. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. And thank you for having me tonight.
All right, you're welcome, and thank you again. Okay, can we go on to communications from city staff? Alyssa, Keith, anyone?
I'm, I'm coming on, so I guess let, let me, let me echo what, what Counselor Patty just said. Kind of took a little of my thunder there. I really want to say, you know, this audit and the results of Brad's speech there and, and information was really, Susanna, Randy, Elizabeth, Teresa, the, the finance team that we have really want to call out and recognize the work they've done. I know how hard they all worked. I know the blood, sweat, and tears, if you will. The second thing I want to kind of state is, I think in 2016, we had Brad come or someone from Buck Carlisle Smith come. It was after a financial audit or forensic audit had been done. We wanted to try to reassure the public on situations where we're at. But I think going forward, what we want to publicly state and what we want the intention and the community to know is, is going forward, what we want to see is the auditor to come speak to the council directly every year. That hasn't always been a tradition, but we want to make it a tradition, and we want to make it an expectation. So I, I just want to say I appreciate, you know, Brad coming on and doing this. But going forward, this is exactly what council should expect and want. And then it gives you guys the opportunity as well to ask questions of the audit, to get any clarifications, to have times where you can directly talk to them. So that's the comments I wanted to make tonight, and appreciate that. And just look forward to continue to go forward with, you know, these kind of audits and this kind of information and just being transparent in what's happening and what's going on. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you have about that, and that's all I have really this evening to discuss.
All right, thank you, Keith. Anything else there? Before we go to appointments, does anyone have anything to share with the council this evening? I think before we do appointments, could we direct staff to take a look at the, the comments that were made this evening? That one comment, that one request, could we ask the staff to take a look at that and come back with a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are, are you moving to business, business of the council? Is that kind of what you're doing there?
No, I just was seeing if the council wanted to forward that request to the staff for consideration and a report back. And then we'll go to communications from the council.
Then, yes, I would like, this is Counselor Hook, and I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to direct staff to look into the issue raised by Mr. Grayden Justice during the public comment regarding the requested variance, the thousand-foot distance requirement between dispensaries.
Second, this is Counselor Patty.
Motion of the second, Ben, to direct staff to take a look at the request from Mr. Justice of moving those boundaries for dispensaries. That's kind of, I think that's got the essence of it. Is there any discussion? Okay, Alyssa, would you poll the council on this one?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
And Counselor Ort. Okay, motion passes five to zero.
All right, good. Now, before we go to committee and commission appointments, is there anything else from the council that needs to come before the group tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one, one thing. Just, just on the thing we just agreed about, I just want to make sure that the staff, make sure to notify Mr. Justice of our decision on that. I think he needs to know. I don't think we really communicated clearly when he was on the, on the feed that we were in agreement or any decision was made. So I want him to know for sure that we are going to bring that up in the next meeting or whatever, so he knows that we're actually doing something about it.
All right, okay.
Yeah, well, we're going to have a staff meeting tomorrow, and we'll talk about where on our calendar we can put it in. And I'll make sure to take note of that and give him a quick email to let him know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. Others?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to go ahead and command staff. I feel like over the last two years of my tenure here as a counselor, there's been continued calls for transparency and not less of it. And I feel like the audit that we just were, you know, given a report on by the auditor is a really good example of that and the continued call for it. So I just want to say that makes my job a lot easier as a counselor, and I would love to see that continue. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I, I want to echo what Counselor Patty said. I've been so impressed by the things that have been brought forward to the council over the last couple of years. I think that is stuff that has needed to be done in the city for a long time. I also wanted to just make one point on decorum. I did not call a point of order earlier because I didn't feel like it would help the meeting along to do so. But I do want to remind everyone on the council, including our presiding officer, the, the mayor, that we're supposed to have courteous interactions, and that's for all persons attending the meetings. Everyone is supposed to abide by the same decorum. So I felt like it was very out of line the way that Counselor Ort was spoken to. And I see that as a pattern, and I'd, I'd really like to see that change.
Well, you're certainly welcome to your opinion, dear. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you please not call me dear?
Okay, Counselor. Okay, committee and commission appointments. I would like to appoint to the Budget Committee Julia McFerrin, the Parks Board, reappointment, Mr. Dan Brummer, and the Planning Commission, reappointment Jackie Carmichael, Heidi Hazel, and Ralph Lewis. And I'd like the council's consideration and approval on that, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question about the Budget Committee. Is this, is this a position that is currently open that truly is?
Yes.
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, and there will be, there are a couple other terms that expired that I'll be reaching out to and to see about reappointments. But this one was filling a vacant position.
Okay, how many vacant positions do we have on that?
I think this was the only actual vacant one. And then it'll depend on what I hear back from the two. I think there's two whose terms expired, just off the top of my head.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, just one more follow-up. So are there any, I've had a couple people approach me about open positions on our committees. Are there any open on the Planning Commission currently, if we reappoint these?
No. None on there. The Parks Board does have quite a few positions open, though.
Okay. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or thoughts on this? These are basically committed people that have served the city well, and, and I'm happy to reappoint, no, reappointments, certainly. So, any like to take action on this, please? Counselor?
I just wanted to say thank you to the members of the community that do serve on these boards. It's a thankless job, so I want them to know that I am very grateful personally.
Thank you. You bet. Other, other comments or thoughts, or do they get a motion to reaffirm these, these appointments or affirm these appointments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to affirm these, the new appointment and the reappointments. Do you have to say who they are?
Okay, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Just as, it's in the, it's listed in the agenda.
Okay.
I'll, I'll poll them and put them in the motion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty, and I would like to discuss one item. On Julia McFerrin's application, she kind of mentioned some social media traffic regarding our town continuing to have this perception by the community as not being business-friendly. I just wanted to say that, you know, if anybody's watching, I, I hope that some of you have seen the other meetings and all the things that we've tried to do for the business community in Stateon. It's my opinion, just based on talking to the chamber reader, Carmel Beilenberg, and, you know, a couple other local business leaders, that that's not really the case. I don't think a reasonable person can really label Stateon that way. That's my own opinion as an individual counselor. But I'm glad to see that Julia McFerrin's looking up to step up to change that perception as well. So thank you, Julia.
Yeah. No, I agree with your, your comments, Counselor, that, that's a lot of cheap talk of, yeah, it's been there for years, and it's a constant battle to, to fight it. But we're not a, we are friendly to business all the time. And we're a little bit careful, but we still are welcoming, and we want to be. Thank you, David. Any others? Alyssa, would you poll the council on these, on these appointments, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen? You're, you're, I think you said yes. You're. You're, you're, I think you said yes, you're on, you're muting when you're talking, that you're backwards.
There we go. Yes.
All right. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
And Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes five to zero.
All right, and thank you, folks. Uh, uh, let's see, I think we've taken care of most of the business tonight. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I had a quick item. Um, I, I did some reflection on last, the last, uh, city council and, uh, selection of the city council president. And I feel like I, I've been through four of those selections. I've been through four of those processes. And they, they tend to seem, um, a little awkward, the way that the process is currently set up. And I would like to, um, make a motion that future selections are done through an executive session. And the reason for that is I feel like we need a healthier, lengthier conversation about, um, about that versus a motion, a quick motion and a selection. Um, a comment was made that the, the role should kind of rotate and that everybody should get a chance. And I feel like that minimizes the, the importance of that role because of the, um, if the mayor is, decides to take a two-week vacation or a three-week vacation or wins the the seven hundred million dollar power ball and decides to vacate his position. Um, that city council president becomes the mayor, the acting mayor, until an official election takes place. And, uh, and I, and I think the seriousness of that as well as the ability to communicate with the city attorney down the road, um, a political animal being in that position that might, take advantage of that position if it's just being rotated versus a thoughtful, methodical approach. And then, nothing to do whatsoever with the, 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 it's just been over the last four times, I just feel this weird, like the, the process needs to be more of a vetting. And so I, with discussion, I, I would like to make a motion that we, um, for future, uh, selections, move that to an executive session, but.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll accept that motion. Uh, can we get a second? All right, I don't think that motion is going to make it, Chris, but certainly the, um,
Mr. Mayor?
Thought is there, yeah, go ahead.
Um, if, does that fall, um, Counselor Mullen, does that fall under the purview of an executive session? That's just my only question for that.
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're not supposed to talk about this unless there's a second. I would like to second the motion just so we can. Audit?
Let's see. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Um, go ahead and discuss. Chris, you had a question direct.
And I don't know if you know the answer to that question, Counselor.
Yeah, I, 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 I would imagine that it does, but I would, I would, uh, I would veer to the city staff for that question.
I, um,
So, if they're still with us.
Point of clarification, Chris, would you?
Point of clarification.
Would you want, uh, city staff to, uh, investigate a, a, a process for selection of, uh, the annual, uh, the annual selection of council president?
If, if the answer is that that's not suitable for an executive session, then I would pull back my motion.
Okay. Uh,
Mr. Mayor?
Where do we go with that one? Uh, a question here, Counselor Ort, and then Counselor Hook, please.
Yeah, um, so this is Counselor Hook. Um, I, I really believe that, uh, making sure that the public is involved, um, and can see that, uh, selection process since it is, um, exactly what Counselor Mullen said, that is the person that would then become the mayor should the mayor vacate his position for whatever reason. Um, I think that the transparency is really important there. I, I do support the idea of maybe having a more robust discussion. Um, and I do agree that it is slightly awkward. But I have seen in other, uh, forums such as like the Oregon Legislature, when they're voting for the speaker, they'll actually vote for the name versus just putting one, uh, one member up. And they'll call for nominations and then they'll actually just state the name out loud for the one that they want to vote for. So there may be better ways to improve our process. Um, but I don't think taking that away from the public is something that I could support.
Yeah, I, so, Mr. Mayor, I struggled with that as well. The, the only issue I had with doing it in a public forum is twofold. One is I think if we're talking about experience, skills, knowledge, abilities, that that could be a bit sensitive to members of the council. And so I thought, you know, maybe a public forum's not the right forum for that. The second is being on the receiving end of being told that you've done a good job and then having the position removed. Like, thanks, but no thanks, it's, it's not you, it's me, um, is a little bit awkward too. So I, I just feel like the whole thing just felt weird and, and yucky and, uh, for lack of a better word. And so, again, if, if the executive session, and I'd like to hear from city staff on that, if it's not an appropriate forum for that, then I'll pull back the motion and we can move towards more of a discussion about what the process could look like, which might be a better motion anyways.
So, I'll, I'll pop in here real quick and say, um, we don't have an answer tonight on the executive session portion of it. But something that we can definitely look into, um, what other cities do for electing that process and just trying to research.
Okay.
Maybe a better, a better way to carry out the nomination here in our meeting.
Thank you, Alyssa. That's fine. I, I will retract my motion then.
Okay, all right. And, uh, a robust session on that issue.
Do we still want to move?
Yeah, I would still like, thank you. I, Mr. Mayor, I'd still like to make a motion that the city look into um, possible processes that other cities are using for the selection process.
Okay.
A lot of further, and it's a year from now, so we don't need that by next city council, but.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
If a, if an executive session isn't appropriate, um, would a, at least having like a work session?
A second on that motion, please, and then just.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got a motion on the floor.
Okay, a second.
Okay, thank you. Now go ahead with your question. Counselor Ort, go ahead.
Um, I definitely agreed to look into, you know, the possibilities or how we can better the process. But even just having like a work session beforehand to talk about it or something like that could be helpful as well.
Okay. All right, so we've got a, a motion and a second to, um, we'll spend the next year looking into, uh, a process for selecting, um, council president. More discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to go ahead and, and tell, uh, Counselor Mullen, I, I do think you did a great job. I, and I guess that came from me, so I'll go ahead and answer to it and just say that I think that we should all be kind of prepared to take on that role, like every single one of us. And I think that, uh, getting the opportunity to do that develops us as leaders and makes us better leaders for Statean. So that's kind of where that comment came from, and I understand your point of view, and I also think it is super awkward during these meetings to have that conversation. So, you know, if there's some kind of way we can improve that process, and I think I share Counselor Hook's reservation about putting that, you know, behind an executive chat, excuse me, executive session. I think that that might limit transparency to the public, how we're deciding that, but I also understand the concern. I don't necessarily want to have our entire resumes vetted out in the open like that, I guess, but, um, so yeah, if we can find some way to improve that process and just make it a little bit more deliberative, I would share that, um, point of view.
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ben?
Uh, I would just share a little insight from the, the one other organization I'm a member of, which is my, my family's business. It's a family-owned business and we have a board of directors and there's a nomination process for that board of directors. And that is done ahead of time, ahead of the shareholder meeting where we vote and actually decide on those directors. Um, and I think that might take a lot of the awkwardness out of it to have those nominations, uh, nomination done ahead of time so that A, the nominee knows they're getting nominated. And B, uh, the rest of the council, in this case, would know who they're considering. And it can have a little bit of just personal deliberation beforehand. Just a suggestion, it seems to work pretty well, uh, in that scenario, but I think that might take a little bit of the awkwardness out of it.
Well, for the, for the last half century, there's been a pretty perfunctory and, and casual thing between council members. If it doesn't work anymore, then we should find another way.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm good with that. Yes?
This is Counselor Patty, um, kind of expanding on that idea from Counselor McDonald. You know, why don't we put the, at least, at the very least, maybe this is an idea we can consider, is putting the nominations forward one meeting and then voting on it at the next meeting. Just an idea I was thinking here.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
So we have, yes, a question. Counselor Hook?
Uh, yeah, I actually just wanted to thank Counselor Mullen for bringing forward the fact that, um, you know, he felt that it might need to change because these are, you know, important conversations to have because we do want to have a good working relationship with one another. And if we can smooth that out in any way and make things not awkward, um, I think that that's definitely always a good, a good thing to investigate and look into. So thank you for sharing that. That was probably awkward to even share, um, on your end. And so thank you for that bit of vulnerability that you had in a public forum. So, thanks.
So, our, our, our motion is to go ahead with, um, and looks, oh, what am I trying to say? Looking at better ways to, uh, elect council, council presidents. Is that close to the intent? Is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And, uh, it'll, it'll be discussion items and staff input and we'll, we'll figure something out. Does that sound all right? Or we can have Alyssa read it back.
No, that sounds about right, Mr. Mayor.
I get lost in the discussion sometimes, which is okay. Yeah.
That, that sounded about what I wrote down.
Okay.
I just appreciate that everybody else recognized the awkwardness of all of it, so. I feel somewhat less embarrassed.
Well, that's, no, that's fine. Thank you, Chris, for bringing that forward. Uh, Alyssa, would you go ahead and poll the council, please, on this?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Ort? And Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Okay. A, a robust and productive meeting this evening. Are, are we done? Let's give it a second here. Okay, let's go home. Good night and thank you, folks.